Minute here. One more button. And. Spranglin, you're good to go. Have a good meeting.
All right. Hi. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Public comment will be available by Zoom as well as in person. As always, community members can also email me at nbranlinia@situate.org anytime, any day with any question. Okay, we will jump right in here with public comments. Seeing none in person, let's check on. We did. That was before. I figured this out, you guys. Do you know hands raised virtually? None in person? Okay, we will jump to our student representatives. Mr. Baker. Where is yours?
No. Thank you. Unfortunately, Emma is unable to join us this evening as she had worked hard during Tech Week for the S H S Drama Club, who will be performing their spring musical, the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Day. That's this weekend, March 17th and 18th at 7:00 PM, and a special understudy show on Sunday, the 19th at 2:00 PM. She sends her love and asks you to go. Congratulations to the boys hockey team that took a 4-2 win over Watertown at Gala Arena on Saturday night. The student section was loud with both voices and water jugs. Sailors will take on the Shoba Regional and the Division 3 State Championship on next Sunday, March 19th at 5:30 at TD Garden. Congratulations to the S H S Cyber Sailors of the Robotics Team, who came in second place this week at their regional competition in our unspoken rival Situate, Rhode Island. They will be attending finals in Revere. The S H S History Bowl Team hosts the Regional History Bowl Tournament last Saturday. They put up a good fight up to the semifinals and are going to the Nationals in Washington DC. Special congratulations to Junior David Murphy, who came in third place for varsity, and sophomore Noah Shepherd for fourth in JV. The Fathom Literary Magazine hosted a poetry slam last Thursday at the Black Box Theater in the middle school. They thank all those that performed and for continuing to collect submissions for their magazine at the end of the year. The Real Estate Club invited football head coach and local mortgage broker Herb Devine to speak at a meeting last Tuesday. Coach Devine brought valuable insight on the challenges and potential rewards of buying your first home. I was personally in attendance and it was amazing. Debate Club has been revived. And interested students met earlier today with new advisor Ms. Sweeney and a new group of student leaders who hope to start training for next year's season. Spring sports are beginning with setup and tryouts occurring in the coming weeks. Students are excited to get out on the field, court, track, and water. Spring sports include baseball, girls golf, lacrosse, sailing, softball, tennis, track and field, ultimate frisbee, and the inaugural season of club volleyball for boys. The Spring Shore Grant Application Cycle is now open with proposals due on the last of March. Students and staff are encouraged to apply to benefit their club, team, or classroom. On March 1st, students on the Principal's Advisory Council volunteered for S H S's Curriculum Night to discuss how they've taken advantage of the opportunities here, both in academics and extracurriculars. Tending students are excited to learn about all of the options for their future at Situate High School. Sixteen students left for Ireland last Friday on a foreign exchange trip. They're staying in West Cork with host families, as students will then come and be hosted here in Situate in the fall. The trip is 10 days and highlights include a trip to Dublin, tickets to the National hurling game between Cork and Wexford, surfing at Inchadani Beach, and even they're going to have their own float in the West Cork St. Patrick's Day parade. Student council representatives spent three days last week at the M A S C Conference in Hyannis, where they attended workouts and met with students from other schools. Eleven students from S H S joined 800 student council members from across the state to develop their leadership skills and learn ways to develop inclusivity, positive school culture, and cool spirit. Senior Lisa Hill has been helping the S H S Choir learn a song in Ukrainian for a fundraiser for Ukraine that will be taking place on March 25th at the Situate Church. Don't know which church. Students are very excited to use their talent to help those in need. And finally, congratulations to the freshman who participated and performed at junior districts at Sharon Con School. That's all I got for you today. Thank you.
Busy, busy. But it's great to hear how. Going on. Anybody have questions?
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move an item, the F D D update, which was originally under the Assistant Superintendent's report. Because we have a guest with us, Flo Dickerson, who will be speaking, Alternative Assistant Superintendent Driscoll. Thank you. I just want to welcome. From here, she's been working with us specifically Greg and Mary and his team for many years, and she's going to give us. Then overview the program, and we have Greg on deck if you have any follow up questions. So, thank you. Can Flo share her screen, please? Perfect. Thanks, Steph.
Right. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Flo, we hear you just fine.
Awesome. So my name is Flo Dickerson. I'm the Assistant Director of Partnerships at PAIR. I know a lot of you have seen a lot of you at various meetings. Happy to be here to talk a little bit about the history of PAIR and the holistic student assessment. Heidi let me know that at a previous school committee meeting, there were some questions about it and asked if I would come kind of share some background. So I'll do that. I should be pretty quick and then. As mentioned, Greg is there. He knows tons about it, can answer questions, and I'm always happy to take questions via email afterwards. So just a little bit of background about PAIR partnerships in education and resilience. We work with both schools, school districts, and out of school time programs, and our focus is really on social and emotional skill development. Resilience and positive mental health. And we know that that has great impacts both for kind of the life skills development of our students and for their academic success. So a little bit about kind of what PAIR does, all of our work is based on the Clover Model of Youth Development. And that is a framework that has been peer reviewed. It's been around for a really long time. And it's a way of organizing the key needs that all of us, both youth and adults, have in order to be kind of socially, emotionally strong, doing really well in our mental health. So you can see that over on the right hand side, those four key elements are things that we've been working with Situate around. Making sure that we're meeting those needs for both our students and staff. So that active engagement, that's about the kind of physical self. We're talking about exercise and nutrition and sleep. That assertiveness is about opportunities for voice and choice and decision making. Belonging, being around relationships and community, and I know that that is a huge focus of Superintendent Burkhead, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. And then that reflection piece is that kind of critical thinking ability to kind of place yourself in the world and and think through and reflect on things. So these are kind of the four key elements that guide all of our work. We try and support the schools and districts that we work with in kind of systematic ways. So we have a variety of tools and services that we provide. Assessment tools, we'll be talking today about that holistic student assessment. As well as training and P D. Coaching, curriculum, evaluation services. So some of these things we've been doing with Situate and some of them we haven't. But just to give you kind of a scope of the type of work that we do. Little bit of history about PAIR because I know that was something that had been a question that had come up. So PAIR was initially started as a project at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Our Chair, Dr. Gil Noam, who is a researcher, psychiatrist, and professor. Was initially working with Boston Public Schools to develop research-based S E D, social emotional development programming. And then over time, that work kind of shifted and changed. So starting in 1999, the work was really focused in after school programming. It was doing a lot of research around kind of how after school programming could support students' social and emotional well-being. And that work was again happening with the Harvard Grad School of Education. In 2007, there was kind of an expansion of the work to include schools as well as after school programs and that kind of research around school-based social emotional well-being increased. That name changed to incorporate that, and we also started a partnership with McLean Hospital, which is a research psychiatric hospital in Belmont, Massachusetts. And the work there kind of continued to grow and shift. In 2009, we first launched our assessment tools, including the holistic student assessment. And started offering kind of training and coaching and professional development around those tools. And in the decade after that, that work kind of continued, we'll talk a lot more about kind of what. Research has been done on the survey itself. But throughout that decade, working with a number of schools, expanding from just working in Massachusetts to working nationally. And in 2020, we spun off to become a benefit corporation, although we still have strong ties to both Harvard and McLean. In order to kind of continue broadening that work, we shifted, as did everybody during COVID, to providing a lot more. Remote supports, and that allowed us to expand a lot more widely as well. So currently, our tools and services are used in all but one state, I think. South Dakota, but 49 states in the US and. Several countries, including Canada, Mexico, the UK, Switzerland, and Australia. So pretty big reach. We currently work with over 1,500 programs and are in over 2,000 schools. So working with a lot of folks all over places as close to Situate as Cohasset and, you know, again, as far away as Mexico and Australia. So really wide reach. A little bit about the holistic student assessment itself. So most of you all are familiar with this. I know there's been presentations at school committee meetings about the data that comes out of this survey in the past. But it's a survey students take about their own well-being socially and emotionally. As I mentioned, it was developed as part of that joint initiative between Harvard and McLean. And one of the really neat things about the HSA is that it's a strengths-based tool. So often surveys that students take that ask about their well-being end up being a little bit. Risk oriented, and so they can be not as strengths-based. The purpose of the holistic student assessment is to see where are our students already doing well? And then where can we support them in those spaces they might be struggling? So it leads itself to a lot of different levels of support, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Again, based on decades of research in child development and that Clover model. These are the scales that the HSA measures. There's 14 of them grouped into these three categories or domains. These resiliencies, kind of general life skills, relationships, both with peers and adults. And then how that translates to learning and school engagement for our students. Just to give you a little bit of a sense of kind of what does this actually look like on the survey? For each of these scales, students are asked four to five different questions that then aggregate into each scale. So I've pulled three of these scales and given you a little bit of an example of how we define that scale at PAIR. And then a sample question that youth are asked on the survey itself. I pulled three that are aligned to belonging because I know that's been our real focus in the district this year. And we're using that HSA data as one data point among many to think about kind of how the belonging initiatives that are going on are working for students. So students are responding to these items on a scale from not at all to almost always. So for that. Item for trust, I think most people are fair. They're saying, yeah, sometimes or often, almost always. And again, there'd be a few of these that relate to each of these scales. So pretty straightforward, pretty quick and easy for students to answer. I know there were some questions about kind of the research behind the HSA. So preface this next section with, I am not a statistician. My expertise is in the classroom and in supporting schools kind of using their data. But I do have some background history. So the HSA, as I mentioned earlier, was initially developed in 2009. But a series of studies have been done. Since then, the initial validation study happened in 2012. Looking at kind of the psychometric properties of the survey. So what does that mean? Psychometric properties are the ways that we can quantify the statistical strength or weakness of a survey tool. And it looks at both the reliability, so how consistent the responses are. And the validity, which looks at kind of across different populations and backgrounds. Do students understand the items the same way? For each of those scales that we looked at, are students consistent in saying, you know, across the four questions for this one scale? I rate myself in pretty consistent ways. And there's been a number of these studies that have been done over time. So that initial one again happened in 2012 and 2017 after there'd been a much longer. Time where youth were taking the survey, a more robust set of studies were done, looking at data from 60,000 different students. The research department at PAIR worked with a lot of different outside experts and statisticians, some of whom are listed here. And they looked a lot at the ways that students of different backgrounds and different populations understand the questions on the survey and are able to have kind of consistency. In the ways that they respond. So a couple of key findings from that. The studies found that items for each of those HSA scales consistently measure the scale that they intend to measure, right? So the questions about trust all relate to that item of trust. A student who is a very trusting student is likely to answer all four of those trust items in a similar way. There was also found to be consistency in. When the survey was taken and to who the survey was given. So the range of youth who take the HSA are fourth grade and up. There's a shorter version of the survey that's developmentally appropriate for third graders. And among that population, we found that students understand the survey in similar ways and are able to respond across different age. Kind of brackets, and then also students of different genders understand the questions in the same way and are able to respond. Again, that 14 scale version that we just looked at similarly similarly understood by students of multiple ages. Both genders and various racial ethnicity groups. So just a little bit there. I have more detail about this if there are questions after. We also have a technical report that was written in 2017 after this research was done that I'd be happy to share with anybody on the committee. And then wanted to bring in a little bit of information. I know that there's always concerns anytime student data is collected about the security and privacy of that data. So just so you all know, all staff at PAIR are really trained in best practices around data security and privacy. We've done a lot of work and our data team especially has done a lot of work making sure that we're aligned to kind of the highest standards for data security. And we're happy to provide more information about that. We have. Information we can share with you all as well as information that can go out to families. And then finally, this is part of a really extended amount of work that we've been doing in the district for years. So PAIR has partnered with Situate since 2016. In that time, we developed a district-wide social and emotional team. That's been functioning and expanding for years, really trying to streamline the efforts that are being done across the district. To make sure that students at every school and at every level are having those same supports. And the HSA has been a part of that work, so using that data to kind of measure. How students are doing and ensure that we are meeting their needs when they're telling us on the survey there are things that they might be struggling with. Currently, grades three through 10 use the HSA. And this year, grade six is doing a pilot of the pre and post version. In the past, students have just taken the pre survey in the fall and then taken it each fall. So we can have year-over-year data, but the sixth grader is trying out taking a pre and a post within the same year. And then the HSA can give us tiering information. So it tells us from a student perspective, how students are feeling. Are they feeling like, yep, I'm doing really well in my social emotional development, my mental health? I'm doing well with these kind of general tier one supports, best teaching practices that are happening across the district. At that tier two level, these are students who are telling us I'm doing pretty well in some areas, and I have some areas that I'm starting to see some struggle. And there's a lot of different efforts that are in place to meet those students' needs. So we have a toolkit that goes along with the survey that folks are using. It's being integrated into the RTAI and MTSS processes that are happening at different schools. As well as kind of initiatives that have been bubbling up school by school. So at Gates, I know Ryan Beatty, who it looked like was on the call, did a lot of work a few years ago around belonging as. It pertains to students wellness at Gates, and there's been a lot of efforts that are, we're trying to kind of. Translate from work that's happened in little pockets to to work happening across the district. There's also some support curricula that are happening at Gates around specific HSA and Clover needs as well. And then if students tell us they're at that tier three space where they're really struggling in their mental health and their social emotional development. Counselors review that data. They look at that list of students and meet with those students' families. And then are making sure that those students are on their radar, getting their needs met. So I know that was a ton of information. I tried to kind of pack it in quickly. But I am around for a little bit if there are questions that are initially coming up. And then, like I say, I'm also happy to answer questions after tonight via email.
I just want to say thank you so much to Flo. You've been a lot of work with us. That was just so helpful and G impact with information. So if you have any questions, she can. Yes, thank you so much for attending. I appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
If you have any initial questions or wanted to.
So first, I would just agree with Assistant Superintendent Driscoll. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was awesome to hear all this great, great stuff. Um, just a couple of clarifying questions. I'm wondering, you know, as well as I do, that sort of our sense of understanding this construct of belonging has changed over time, that the research tells us it's. More dynamic and subjective and sometimes it oscillates, right? And so I'm wondering, in addition to the sort of academic literature, sort of what do you, what does your team do? In terms of checking in with the assessment to make sure that it's reflecting. It's agile in the sense that like it's responding to the changes of belonging, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I think the items themselves, we've tried to keep consistent so that folks can use the survey year over year and have that comparison data. I think the. Recommendations that we give in terms of our toolkit are things that sometimes change. And definitely when we're thinking about coaching or professional development, that's going to be related to what's going on in the world. So we've a number of trainings that we developed. During and since COVID that are kind of looking at the the specific moment that we're in right now. And I think that definitely comes through in in the work that we're doing with Situate, kind of thinking about. What has belonging looked like in the past? Was it look like right now? And the HSA is a piece of that. There's a lot of other. Data that's being collected, and I know Greg has a presentation planned, I think, for you all in the future around the belonging initiatives more more broadly.
Another question, you mentioned that the the literature has tested the instrument against like age, gender, race. I'm just curious, is this also true with things like, you know, contextual contextual like geographic region, SES, for example? What you know about that?
Yeah, so the. Norm population that's used in the survey was looked at across different geographic regions. It didn't map exactly to the US Census because we were basing it on states where students were already taking the assessment. But they did look at kind of different regions of the country. We have less data on social, I mean, SES in terms of the socioeconomic status, partly because. That's not information that we ask students to tell us on the survey or on rosters that we get from schools. I think some inferences could be made looking at kind of geographic data, but we don't. Yeah, we don't ask students about that, so we don't have as much data on that.
Last question, and it might be, Mr. Renier, this might be a better question for you, so I don't know who can field it. I think what I've noticed, and I wonder if my colleagues on the school committee have have noticed, is I think there's some. Confusion when when parents and school committee receives the reports in terms of interpreting the data. And so I'm wondering, Flo, and maybe, I don't know if you could help me. So for example, I was at a school council meeting several months ago and the principal reported. I don't have the exact numbers, but I pulled one up on the PAIR website. So they'll say something like. Percentage of students with strengths, right? And so they'll say, for example, emotional control, 25% of students show strength. And my question was. Okay, that's a strength, but the the pair is only revealing that 25, only 25% of our students are reporting that. And so I don't know if I should be happy about that or worried because it's only 25%. And then the same is true with challenges, right? Where it's like 25% are optimistic, right? So I'm just trying to understand, like, what what do I make of that sort of finding? And I just didn't get a good answer, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the one thing that that visual can sometimes leave out is that you have a lot of students that are within the norm. So when we categorize things as a strength or a challenge on the holistic student assessment, students are being compared to a nationally normed sample of students their same age and gender. So if, and then we have these three categories, right? We have, this is a strength of the student or this group of students. This is within the norm for their age and gender, and then this is a challenge. So if you're looking at those strength and challenge numbers, if I have 25% of students saying this is a strength, that means they're above the norm. They're doing really, really well. I would look across and say, okay, what is the challenge percentage in that scale? And maybe that's, you know, we've got 10% of our students, 20% who are really struggling in that. The rest of that group of kids is in the norm, what we would expect for students their age. And so that's not worrying to me unless that challenge space gets much higher. Because, you know, if students are doing on par with the norm, that's not something I'm concerned about.
Okay, yeah, I think just for my own satisfaction, Mr. Renier, maybe like we can sort of think about, just make sure that parents and we understand that. Because I don't know that that's always been evident to me, and maybe I'm the only one. I don't know if you guys felt that way, but if that wasn't clear, that norming piece, so.
That's a very fair point to make. When you look at the strengths and challenges, right? Think of it almost as like.
Yeah, there we go.
So when you think of strengths and challenges, think of it as a bell curve with standard deviation. So when it says, for example, I'll give an example of high school, one of the scales that we look at for belonging. Is school bonding, and at the high school level, 20, that's a strength of 27% of our students. Now that means that if you look at the bell curve with standard deviation, that's 17.5% and 17.5% on either end. So that means 27% are in the top 17.5% of their population. So that means the middle 66.6% is the norm that Flo is referring to, which wouldn't classify them as either. So that means the middle 66.6% is the norm that Flo is referring to, which wouldn't classify them as either. A significant strength or challenge, it could be a relative strength or a relative challenge, but it would still be within the norm, if that makes sense. And this is, you know, I will say that we've had some, I'm, one of the things I'm really excited about is as we build our capacity as an SED team. Every year, I see the people that have been with us, for example, I believe you're a Padley parent. So like Colleen Frankie, she's been with us since the beginning. And she does, knows this, her capacity continues to build. And so these are very fair questions for a lot of the school adjustment councils. If they can't help, I'm right here, or I mean, I'm here anytime. I love this stuff, so I could, you know, be here all night, and I think we have a school committee meeting planned in June, which I'll. You take an hour or two of your time to go with today. So, right, so when we talk about belonging, right from Superintendent Burkett's leadership, right? We've set a pretty assertive goal, is we want 100% of our students to have a sense of belonging in the school. So while there are 14 scales within the HSA, we're particularly focusing on five that align very closely with belonging. And those are trust, empathy, relationships with peers, relationships with adults, and school bonding. So those are the ones we're comparing year over year, trend groups within cohorts as well. And so those are things I'll share out, you know, share on my time, but we're going to try to, the June presentation will be focused in on. Not only that, we are doing periodic seasonal assessments with thought exchanges with students as well. Use risk behavior data, which is the opposite end a little bit, but we started to induce and protect effective questions into our YIBS data. And then there's also data through vocal of MCAS data as well, so we're really getting probably four pools of information to look for trends. And validate some of our conclusions. And I know that I'm going to keep working until we get 100%. We don't hit it, we're going to keep trying.
No, I, I, I appreciate this, I just think the translation piece, right, would be helpful to think about, like. How do we present this in a way to parents and others that's maybe going beyond what the pair like dashboard creates? Just not assume that everybody understands that it's norming and standard deviation, but like really translating that into people. It's like what you just said was super helpful, so thank you for that.
That's great. We have an SED team coming up and we'll see if we can create some very user friendly, like one sheets, if that makes sense, and make sense of some of the like FAQs.
I was going to ask for like the trends, but you'll be presenting that in June, because that's what I'm curious about. You know, it's great to see like a snapshot, but you know, we're doing this to help kids, students, so we want to see. You know, the fruits of our labor.
That's the plan, is to share out some trends specifically related to belongings, so keep them being under.
Thank you. I, I totally agree, I think this is great. I think we are fortunate to have parents at situat, I know there are other options out there and I find this to be just. Extremely comprehensive and really well done. To, to Greg's credit and the team, all the hard work that you've put in over these years to really get it to where it is. But, and, and then I think that is, Carrie's point, the next step is how do we then articulate that to parents? In a way that's really, really understandable, because it's, it's a tough subject, it's, it's emotionally charged. And it can upset you to get certain information about, especially, you know, social emotionally related these days. So to that end, I think another piece to this is those follow-up conversations that happen when you do. Get this data and, and, and it does become very individualized and, and the phone calls, so.
We could like, it certainly had one of our school council of adjustment councils come in and give an example of a, a student that might pop as a tier three student. And how they handle that, that must be good to have that in our standard count. But the process is the same, I mean, it's the same, just some quick feedback as a committee. We did do, I did do a quick survey in December of all the members of the SED team. And the feedback was great, so for example, questions like, I believe hair resources such as the HSA Qualtrics. And the toolkits are helpful to my understanding, supporting students' SED needs. And 100% of folks that were part of the team, as you might imagine, strongly agreed or agreed. And then they all said they, they don't have answers to things, they know what they can reach out, do with Flo and myself and. But I hear, I hear what you're saying about making sure that it's bite-sized, digestible pieces or some of the pieces that could be a little bit graded. To folks that are new to it, make it clear.
Another question I'll have for June, so maybe this ahead of time. Defining empathy at the younger grade and some of these measures that, that's a really intangible piece sometimes for youngsters. And third and fourth even grade, to sort of, how do we put that into?
I'll give you a quick example, so some of the HSA questions that are included in empathy is, I like to help people with their problems. Other people's feelings matter. When I see another kid who is hurt or upset, I feel sorry for them. I feel bad for other kids who are sad or have problems. When I see someone being bullied, I feel sorry for them. So those are, you know, the same Likert scale as you, those are the example of the five questions that are part of the HSA that students would be asked about those. And they respond on a, you know, Likert scale to them.
Love it, thank you so much.
Oh yeah, thank you, I'll have a good rest of your evening.
All right, everybody, thank you for having me. I know the other presentations have been K to 12, which is really nice to see sort of what's happening as well in the district. But due to a time constraint, we decided to do the elementary stem one, so we didn't have to miss one of them. And we'll highlight some of the things that are happening at the elementary level. So I just wanted to highlight some of the way that we're celebrating student learning, terms of STEM at the elementary level. When I put all these pictures in, I was writing my captions. And then after I take a look at it after, I'm noticing the one thing that's happening in every single one of these pictures is hands-on learning. Which is something that we were in desperate need of throughout COVID. And that was the piece that was missing for so long through the pandemic. So we are so excited that the way we are celebrating student learning really now is hands-on learning, hands-on application of skill. And making these authentic experiences for all of our students, K to five. So the picture on the left, you can barely see it, but there's a little parachute coming down. And that is an engineering project that was happening with our STEM, our district STEM teacher, Jordan, who's phenomenal. This was the culminating project where students were designing parachutes with different materials. And then in pairs, one person, one teammate would drop it down, the other person's timing it. They're seeing how long they're staying in the air, identifying properties of their parachutes, and then which ones would make. A better parachute. In the middle, again, another hands-on opportunity for our students, they're participating in the science lab. Where they were observing physical properties of rock in order to class by then. Which is virtually impossible when we actually can't touch rock, which we were missing through COVID. So it's just so nice and refreshing to pop into classrooms and see students touching them, they, looking at things, measuring, using scale. Having great conversations with each other, so that's another opportunity that we have in the science classroom. And then on the far right, that was actually a social study classroom where. They were learning about the American Revolution and the Tea Act. And they were tasked with creating a device or a vessel that would float the tea down the river. It had to be waterproof and had to float so that they could avoid a attack from the Dutch. So just a great way to indicate all the subject areas. So the top picture is them designing, we're having authentic conversations about what's going to make it float, what's going to make it waterproof. And then the bottom picture is all the groups tested their vessels to see if, once they were submerged for five seconds, if they came out with a tea bag. So just a great opportunity for our students to apply the skills that they're learning in class through. Another awesome opportunity that we had this year was the February Math Acceleration Academy. Through the work of Donna Moffett, she wrote a grant and we had an awesome opportunity for teachers and students. So we had a group of 38 students in grades three to five attend the math acceleration academy during February break. The focus of the acceleration academy was, again, hands-on engaging learning for students. And the teachers, I give them so much credit, they totally nailed it. We walked through the hallway at Gates during that vacation week, and we're laughing and talking about math, they were excited to be there. A lot of the times, we are so limited by our six-year family in a math block. That we missed out on those like fun vocabulary games that grow in the middle with math vocabulary practice. Or the robots encoding on the right-hand side, or getting outside to play a math sort of inspired kickball game. All of these are math-related activities that we miss out on sometimes during traditional school day. So this was just such a wonderful opportunity for our students. And one of the things that I would love to share is that there was two students, I think they were siblings. And their parents had called our site coordinator and said, oh, we're going to be picking up our kids a little bit early on Friday, we were heading upstairs. Typical, this is voluntary, and the student said, no, 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 you don't want to pick us up at regular time, you don't want to miss anything. And I was like, we're doing something right, and we're constantly here, and for Bill, see this a lot during this committee of that. We want to make a school where kids want to come, and so clearly that happened during the week, so the whole week of people were celebrating. They're not leaving early for a speaker, they were tuned in. Such a wonderful, a wonderful sign for us, which was great. And then how do we celebrate academic achievement? This year, we have, it's our first year with S T Math, which SD stands for Spatial Temple. Which is an online program which takes away symbols and language from math and is sort of built without first students. To move G to the Penguin and learn their math skills without the language and without symbols. So they have this concrete understanding of how to move objects, mentally and spatially through time to build their understanding of mathematics. So what we've been doing this year for K to five is that as they move from their math journey, they get awarded at all schools. At 25, 50, 25, 100%, they get awarded a certificate, students are very excited to, to get them. Some people are delivered personally by a pencil, some are an loudspeaker. So that's one of the opportunities that we're celebrating academic achievement. There's also contacts within all the buildings of classrooms with team effort, the most puzzles for the league, the most minutes for the month. And lots of different things that we're celebrating sort of academic achievement. The other thing is that Maggie and Gregory and I have worked really hard to make sure that we are sharing. The benchmark data with families, through 10 years, from the beginning of your benchmark data, we're now on paper. And then the middle of your benchmark data, with the help of Steve, the props, yeah, up on Amazon. Which is a nice way to sort of store the data as well as compare it to the fun and the challenging progress. And we will continue with that for any of your data work, well, as well. One thing really proud of is that with looking at the benchmark data, 86% of students K to five are at or above benchmark. According to our math benchmarks data, which is huge, something that we're really proud of, and teachers are working really hard to get there. What we're looking forward to. So the, last year, I had the privilege of taking a group of students to Bridgewater State University's invention convention for the first time. So they host it every year, our students can read class to eat. So I was able to take a group of students last year, and then this year, we have three teams of students who will be participating. In that convention in June, which is awesome, they've already started brainstorming, designing their inventions. And then, again, Maggie and Gregory and I work very closely together, so we will be hosting another one of our parent information sessions. That's April 5th for an overview of our exciting.
Great, thank you so much, that was awesome, so much information. I didn't know that that was what S T Math stands for, but now I, I don't know why, I never thought to ask, that was my fault, but interesting. Any questions from the committee? So thank you for all your work. I was going to say, that large group of kids over February vacation, that's awesome. Yeah, and the teachers, I will say, work so hard to make sure that they came back every day, getting fun, planned well together. And it was a group of teachers from a prostitute that was in the elementary, through the gate, through the clerks, and such like, it was all hands on deck. Really wonderful experience. We have some of these nice boys play volleyball at the short high school, the one with Wyatt and athletic director, got me.
We also have on Caleb Foley here with us as well.
So I'm just going to introduce and then pass this along, we often talk about student voice and the development of extracurriculars in classes. So it's great to be able to showcase an example of a student's making model leadership, to grow to new activity of interest. We have grade nine student Caleb Foley, who will share his experience helping to get boys from volleyball underway with the support of Mr. Payne. We're so glad to see this activity and the support it has from the student body come to fruition to this strength, so.
So before I let Caleb take over again, in the fall, Caleb came to me. I was a little nervous knocking on my door and brought to my attention that he would be interested in trying to start a boys volleyball team. So we have a document that has all the criteria for establishing a new sport at the high school. So Caleb and I sat and talked about the document, I forwarded him the document. And I said, we need to be able to make sure that all these steps can be met, and that's when Caleb kind of took over. He went through the document, did everything he needed to do. I'll let you tell, I'll let him tell you the story of how we got to this point.
Thank you very much, I'm listening. I have been playing volleyball, but it's a, I found it incredibly fun, really jokes. So when I realized that there was no opportunity to play at situat high school, I thought, well, why not try to make the sport a reality? Because I knew lots of other people who I thought would be interested in this, just like I would. So as Mr. Payne said, I reached out to him at the beginning of the school year, and I sat down with him, and I sat down with him and we talked about like. What I need to do, how many people I would need to get in the future, what fundraising I would need to do, like. He shared his document with all the interior and he was like, okay. okay, so obviously you'll need to get fundraising for coach officials and uniforms. And also I need to get people. So he recommended putting on a Google for, or create a Google form and sending it out to a large portion of high school students and middle school students. So immediately, that's what I, what I got to work. And the survey results were really good. I got over, I think near twenties, near thirty responses, which was surprising because I was just before February break. But like the day of February, I got it this way. So that was really surprising is how many people responded immediately. And like, more, the majority of people said they would be willing and interested to participate in this. So it was a really good sign. And then ever since then, I've been working to affect the market, Mr. Payne, about like, really getting into fundraising and like, figure out what we'd have to do. I found a coach, I found somebody who would like coaching, Mr. Dyberg, Richard Jacobson.
And he also coaches girls JV.
Yeah, he, he was willing to coach, so I reached out to him and then I reached out to a bunch of my friends who I knew would be interested. And through them, we got a lot of support from other sports teams and stuff like that. And then you just been working, yeah, this started, I recently been trying to, I've recently been trying to, kind of encouraging anybody and everybody that I feel would be interested to go and set up on this kind of initiative. Out of, it happens a lot.
You messed up one thing. You sent the survey out to people.
Oh, for Christmas, right? Not February, but that right now.
That would have been a lot, a couple weeks into this. So the, you know, the nice thing about adding a sport like volleyball is there's no cost in equipment. We, we have the gym, we have the nets, we have the balls. So, you know, that's, that's the nice part about this sport is the investment from the parent group. Like, as Caleb said, it's really uniforms, coach, and efficient. So if we can put together a ten-game schedule, we can do it pretty efficiently. There is actually, the Patriot League does not have boys volleyball. Most of the boys volleyball teams in Eastern Mass, unless you're part of the Bay State Conference, are independent. So that works so we can compete with Quincy, North Quincy, Rain Tree, Wayman, Norton, and Hang in the starting of volleyball program. Questions?
When you say they're independent, you mean they're clubs? They're all?
They're not members of a league. Like, they're members of the Patriot League and the department.
But all the other schools you mentioned, they have clubs?
No, they're RC programs, they're MIA RC program, but they're independent. Like, Hang in place is an independent art school. They, they, they're a company. It's an MIA-recognized sport. Right now, they're just, aren't an auto in the schools in the Patriots, or to be a league school.
That's great. I think, thank you for the effort of identifying a need and and going for it. A lot of people, you know, if you only have four years in high school, so it's good that you did that. So a couple of questions, Mr. Payne. So if, if this is approved as a club, you could schedule the spring season, you think?
Yes.
Kind of a silly question, but I'm going to ask you, does this have any Title IX implications?
No, it does not. We added girls golf last year as a sport. And we're not out of bounds because Title IX is really on opportunities. So we have a student who has noticed that we don't have an opportunity and has created the opportunity. We don't have any other programs right now where people are looking to create opportunities. But we are not, not in some of the.
Okay. And how many, I don't know much about volleyball, but how many players are generally on a team? Is it like twelve?
You rule with six, sorry.
Yeah, general team is six players.
So like ten, you could feel it. What, what are you hoping to get about ten?
Ideally, like a best case scenario, twelve, but six to ten, it would work just as well.
Okay. So and this, so this is, would be for this spring. And girls volleyball is the, is the fall or winter, it's fall, fall. So remind me of what our policy is. Is it, so it's a sport, a club sport for how many years?
So it could go a couple of different ways. The criteria that we have now is it's a club sport, self-funded for two years. Unless the superintendent school committee maybe want to do something differently. But what can you become a fully funded by RC sport year three?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
And what about transportation?
So right now, for club programs, most clubs provide their own transportation. The one part that I, in the document, why I mentioned this, the one part that I really, really like about this is it's student-led, my parent-led. This is all been done by Caleb and his friends. And I'd like to give him a lot of credit.
Great. Or, yeah, maybe not, but we have, I think we all fully support your initiatives and endeavor and looking forward to the next best.
You're, you all.
It shows.
You're, you all having positive reactions. It means you have no idea how much it is.
Great.
Thank you. Let us know when the first game is.
Yeah.
Will do. And this is Mr. Foley, the guy who's here, he's leading the fundraising endeavors.
Excellent. We're not voting on anything. That's a gift from home there. So I want to thank both Mr. Payne and Greg Renary, who have had a vested interest in the prostures donation, as we can complement both of their respective programs. So they've both been very instrumental in helping us get some post years donation to tuition.
So about a year and a half ago, I was, I was approached by some boosters members about a gentleman that wanted to donate a set of prostures that were, was at, at that time at Harvard University, being used by their athletic department. The gentleman's name is Rich Mullin, who was a Citro resident. He is one of the initial investors in the concept of prostures and is still involved in the company. So Harvard was purchasing a newer unit. So they didn't know what to do with the unit that was at Harvard. Harvard did not want it any longer. So Mr. Mullin approached some Citro boosters and then they approached me and it was quite a long involved process to see if this was something that actually would, could, could and would work. It's a tremendous piece of equipment as far as fitness is concerned. Mr. Renary can speak to that a little bit better than I can. He actually went to a facility where there was a set of prostures and did a workout and he wasn't in school for next week. Now, he thought, he thought it was a great piece of equipment and thought it would be a big benefit to both the athletic program and the wellness classes. The unit itself has a value of approximately thirty thousand dollars if we were to purchase it used. As you know, the unit is outback, it does have the Harvard graphics on it. But I think in your packets, you have the, the wrap with the situant colors on it, which I believe will be produced this week and then installed in a, a week or two, depending upon what the weather situation is. And then it needs to be moved into its permanent location where the highway department came and cleared out that area.
So it's more comprehensive.
It also has the capabilities, there's a pull-up bar. You can connect the bands to it, do different workouts with that. It really is an amazing cardiovascular workout. Try to do that for five minutes, you're totally gassed, not going up the stairs.
Can you go over again where it's going to be stored and when it will be outside?
So it's outside now?
It's outside now.
Yeah, it's not in its permanent location. It's going to be near the flagpole, behind the shot put pit circle, kind of close to the fence of the tennis courts.
Okay. So and that's going to be, that's outside?
Yes.
Day and night?
Yes. It's firebath.
Are you worried at all about people using it after hours?
Yeah.
No, so you can actually, so we don't, we don't want to keep it.
Well, like off school hours, I think.
So many towns have these in playgrounds.
Oh.
Public playgrounds, playground specs, so that it can be used by anybody twenty-four seven.
Yeah, I just didn't know we were concerned, had a guess around about, you know, people coming in.
No, no, we actually, we, you know, if people want to come and run the track and do a few sets on the prostures, that, that's great.
Great.
And then we did work with the, the town, the town administrator, our rec department, TPW, to make sure that everybody was on board.
Thank you for giving that information. Okay, well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that the school committee accept with great appreciation the prostures, which will be located on the turf field at Citro High. Before we, or when I ask the question about the turf field.
It's not on the turf, it's on grass.
Okay.
But actually not grass, still not.
Okay, so I will rephrase that. Let's restart. I make a motion that the school committee accept with great appreciation the prostures at Citro High. All in favor?
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Oh, really rich.
Mr. Mullin, yes, Mr. Mullin, very nice. All right, second sentence against Bob Hoffman. Yes, we were so fortunate to receive a beautiful acoustic guitar from Citro resident Bob Hoffman to use in our music program. It's currently being used in guitar workshop, taught by Mr. Richter. So students and staff are very pleased to have that addition to our music program. I make a motion that the, the school committee accept with great appreciation Mr. Hoffman's donation for guitar, acoustic guitar to Citro. Second, all in favor? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you may have made known, I've known over the course of the year, we've been looking to replace retirement on June thirtieth of this year of Dr. Bob Dutcher, Director of Business Finance. Dr. Dutcher has been with us three years and has done remarkable work in bringing transparency, stability, and just wonderful ideas of growth, including capital projects. Make this light item to our budget, I could go on and on. So a man that certainly will be missed and not replaceable. But our task was to do just that, to find somebody that could fill our shoes and continue the great work that Dutch has done in collaboration with our town administrator, school committee, overseeing the budget, obviously, I think a big role in that as well as select board in our great townspeople for supporting our budget. So I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Driscoll for leading the process of finding our next Director of Business of Finance. I quickly want to take a minute to address the ten-person committee that was on that. Hiring committee to look at candidates, interview them, and pass on recommendations to myself. Those include Ms. Driscoll, school committee members, Ms. Bren Leedy, Mr. Gates, our parent, Ms. Lori Winthrow, staff members Cindy Saysoe and Andrea Corcoran, town finance director Nancy Gold, teacher David Smalley, library administrator Justin Finney, and our own HR director, Ms. Farnie Donahue. So they did a large group, they did a lot of work of looking through resumes. We had four applicants, three that were certified and how they qualified that went through the interview process. And I will tell you, at this point throughout the state, there are at least ten and up to fifteen positions that have been open for the year. It's very competitive and good people are hired to find this position. So I think we're very fortunate that we had three that were very highly qualified and did very well through the process. If you want to share with the community the process that we went through. This job was months in the making, we posted it back in early January, advertised extensively throughout the state and nationally through the National Association of School Superintendents. Screening committee was formed, they had their own orientation and training on the process, which we felt very important. They went through an extensive credential review, then scheduled interviews to meet the three candidates that decided to interview. Interviews could, were conducted on the weekend, February twenty-seventh of this year. And each member of the interview team was able to then go after discussion and rate each candidate in a multitude of rubrics. And that information was then forwarded to me. Three finalists were, were recommended. And they were all ranked boarded by the points they scored in that feedback and rubric. One clearly rose to the top in not only every category, but every person. So clearly, from the hiring raised process, there was one clear cut and unanimous decision to move forward. They then interviewed all three candidates and found the same result. That there was one candidate that was clearly at the shoulders above, that was represented a really good fit for what we're looking for, some of the characteristics that I mentioned. And that individual is Dr. Tom Rad. He's currently the superintendent for the Southern Public Schools. And I will go through some of his resume highlights. He's been twenty-eight years in education. He has experience, he is a guidance counselor, vice principal, principal, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. Basically, this position for seven years. And I believe this is his third year as superintendent. He has a bachelor's, bachelor's of history from the Health College of the Holy Cross, Master of Arts in Education from Seton Hall University. He's got an advanced certificate in counseling from Austria University, an advanced certificate of graduate studies in educational administration from Bridgewater State University, and a doctorate in education and leadership in schooling from the University of Lowell. His compliments, accomplishments were briefly, he's completed eight comprehensive operational budgets, all successful in the Hill River public schools. He's experienced with multiple capital planning projects, which we are obviously have many going on here in the district. He served on building committees for three MSBA projects that were all approved, which we're also going through. Experienced in negotiating contracts, which is an important part of this job. He's master certified as a public first purchasing official, which stands for MCPO, which helps with the process through the MSBA and other building projects. And his history of transparency, integrity, credibility, all things that we want to continue to hear. He spoke specifically after an in-depth interview with Mr. Rad with three respected references, all three of whom I've known through my twenty-eight years, twenty-nine years in education. First, the superintendent of the Hill River Public School, Mr. Matt Perrin, who worked as a supervisor of Mr. Dr. Rad for eight years. Ms. Ruth Lynch, who has grandchildren in our district, a longtime educator for principal, teacher, and current school committee member for the Hill River Public Schools. And Ms. Sandra Grobe, the school committee chair of Southern Public Schools. I'll just read a few quotes that they shared with me that I thought were important and things that stood out. One said, he's an outstanding educational leader and even a better business manager. Honored to have worked alongside him for over eight years. We were able to accomplish so much with him as our business manager. I'd hire him in a second. I've known Tom for over twenty years. He is incredible, smartest person I know. Will be fortunate to have him as your business and finance director. He makes great choices on behalf of kids, is loyal, committed, and one of the best at what he does. He's a really nice guy to his core, amazing at numbers with the ability to solve monetary problems 15 different ways than anyone else who sees one. Smartest guy in the room, very intelligent, hardworking, and dedicated." So I think we'd all agree that those are strong qualities. Is this position also oversees food services, custodial, and transportation in our district? And this will be a member of our dynamic leadership team. So tonight, without reservation, for due diligence and support of our committee, I want to recommend to the school committee that we hire Dr. Thomas Rad as our next director of business finance.
Great, thank you so much, Superintendent Burkett. Anything that you want to add?
No, I would just go on Superintendent Burkett's comments. I had the opportunity to be on the search committee and he was operated in my estimation as well, and I think this would be lucky to have him. Just wanted to echo and follow up that I fully support his application. Is that correct? His application to work for us.
I agree too. It's tough shoes to fill, but I think he'll be up for the task. All right, so I will make a motion.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve Dr. Thomas Rad as the next Director of Business and Finance in Central Public Schools.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be right back. Well, the next part is to talk about the school committees, so.
We have a support district report.
I'm so sorry. You can carry on, for some reason. Out of all these remarks on my paper that were doing the FUT update. My apologies. Do matter here. I appreciate it. It will be a quick update, because I think all of you have received your school report cards from your schools already. So I just want to share with everybody how you can find this information on our website and what it is. So I think you mentioned maybe sometimes it's difficult to sift through, you know. So why the District Report Card, the School Report Card was created by the state was to have a one-stop shop for a simple, simple place to begin to look at district and school data. So I'm going to share this. What's so cute? And so if you go to our district website and scroll down, you can get reports about our district. And on each learning page on each school, you also have their school report card, their conference room reports, things like that. So this district report card, it happens to be on our website, but it's public on, on desk. So if you Google it, it typically looks much. And these are points that districts and schools use to evaluate why things happen in the district. Why is achievement what it is? So none of these things in, on its own, is is a mark of achievement or a mark of strength, but it just answers questions so that school councils, so that strategic planning committees will have a place to start to inform what our school, I guess, what our schools are reading. So for example, you've seen me referencing my MCAS report, our different breakouts of student demographics. So instead of going to those very confusing gigantic charts, which are available if you want to see more, there would be more data. Our district enrollment for three years is at a glance available and compared, you can compare it to the enrollment in Massachusetts. So at a glance, you can say our district, our enrollment is going down. It looks like it's pretty similar to these states. And if you want to take a deep dive at anything, with the more detailed data, you'll get those gigantic charts for you to pick and choose. The other thing I want to point out is that every single subgroup can be broken out for each one of these elements. So sometimes people might ask this specific question or want to know information about a certain group. You can do that for any one of these points. I'd like to point out the state tests. This one looks a little tricky because there are two graphs, but you have to actually go to the right to see math, to see English by grade. And at different schools, all of the grades that are available at that school for assessment appear on this chart. I'll pull up maps since I've heard of this just today. You can break this information out by any group at a glance. Something that per pupil spending, something that one of our actual business and finance interviewees mentioned was comparing the dollars spent per student to see by student achievement. And this is where you can get that information at a glance. You can see the state compared to our district. And then you quickly scroll up to the state test results. So do we get a good education for the dollar amount that we're spending per child? So that's the district information. And you can also go back if you want to look at the years past, all the years past are archived. There's something that confuses people sometimes on our high school and our middle school and our elementary school reports. And it's the district versus school information. So I'm going to pull up student performance. So if you look, our school is a little bit different from our district. So that doesn't make sense in my high school because we only have one base to look at. I want you to know that our district results include all outside placement students. So anyone that's Central High School counts for our district. The school counts for the school. So that's why if you look at Central High School, you see, wait a second. By the way, it's the identical, that's the reason why it wouldn't get done. Does that make sense? Is something that we are, that's driving some of our goals this year was our student attendance. Again, at a glance, you can look at it's been a little bit later. And you can look at it by group. Questions about that? Okay, so this is just a tool that I wanted to share. I hope that you're using this with your school councils. I hope that this is where people start when they ask questions. And as always, you can get into the weeds and take a much deeper dive with every single one of these things. This is strictly state information. So Heather mentioned some of our district assessments because we always have to progress monitor throughout the year. This information does not include district assessments, it only includes our state information. Any questions about that, or do you have questions about your own school report card that you receive from your school?
I think it was confusing for some parents, just the fact that they call it a report card. It was like, what? Report cards are coming out today, but that was just, that's just one of those.
That's how we made it happen.
Right, yeah, report card today was kind of like, oh, okay. It is what the state calls it. Fair enough. And one thing is being to your point about when a candidate for a position at Central Public Schools was researching our district, and they go to these public resources, and they are able to draw conclusions about our district through that information. It's all there, and it was very interesting to get that feedback about how, how, I believe that candidate said that we're going to pay for our back. So there it is. Thank you, thank you. All right, let me, I am going to share my screen so we can see what's going on here. No, no, not my point. Yeah, interesting. I just, I just wanted to put the, in case anyone was interested at all. So we are going to vote on some committee updates for each of these positions. I don't know if anyone has any. So the ones that we're voting on are the ones with the asterisk, so we'll need a second representative in some cases, and then a singular representative in others. I don't know if anyone has anything that they were interested in.
These are just to fill the election record.
Yes, well, a couple of them, the financial forecast shouldn't be meeting again, so I don't think we need it.
What is it?
Financial forecast.
There you go.
We should not be meeting again.
You have a formality. It's like, if we, we can put somebody in there just because we might as well build a space, but yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yes. So happy to start here with financial forecast, if anyone's interested in reading that. Anyone?
It's not going to meet again.
Probably not going to meet again.
I agree. I was going to say, I can put my name.
It's the best committee in town.
I agree. Now you're going to get one that is to me.
I'll be the one. Okay, so that's different than the finance subject.
Yes. Very different. Very different.
Right, but, but two different. I meant like more not to be.
Capital planning, same thing, there shouldn't be any more meetings necessarily. Put my name on it.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting.
You're welcome.
I can do well simply before. Unless somebody else wants to. In case, if there's ever a time where.
If someone needs to go to the central office to sign the documents.
Just in case, like they needed to.
Yeah. Which one?
You'll go.
Like not part of our. I'll just policy.
Good.
I did.
All the updates.
Change development. Is it okay to be on to the school?
Yeah.
West Cork.
Missed that one. So SEF and West Cork, and then Aerie.
If you put me on Sister City, go on.
Okay. And.
Should I do the finance subcommittees and the financial forecast?
Sure.
Yep.
Did anyone want to do SEF?
It's not on our thing.
It's not on our thing.
If you can do it, all right.
I'll do it. Are you ready, Janet? Yeah, I'm already on, oh, you're on. All I have on my list.
What's the DEI side? We don't have to do that anymore.
No. Yes.
You can do it. I make a motion that the school committee appoint Carrie Bukowski as the warrant signer.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Janice Lombon as member of the finance sub.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Nicole Brandon Weenie as a member of the policies.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Janice Lombon as a member of the SIF lead bank committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Nicole Brandon Weenie as a member of the SEF liaison to Central Education Buddy.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Carrie Bukowski as a member of the Jenkins Subcommittee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Peter Gates as a member of the West Fork Sister City Subcommittee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Peter Gates as a member of the capital planning liaison.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the school committee appoint Janice Lombon as a member of the financial forecast league.
Second, all in favor? Excellent, thank you all. Approved, little of minutes, January 30th as well as February 6th.
I make a motion that the school committee approve the January 30th, 2023 minutes.
Second, all in favor?
I make a motion that the school committee approve the February 6th, 2023 minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Dutch, with two warrants for us tonight. On the yacht.
Good evening. So the first warrant, S230302, in the amount of $283,153.26. And twenty-six cents out of our um revolving accounts. School lunch, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Most of that is for uh food that we've ordered. Student activities, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Um again, the funds are in those accounts to pay for the senior dinner dance. And Deca merchandise, which then gets reimbursed uh as the sales occur. Special Ed I D E A, twenty thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Out of circuit breaker, we paid fifty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh to private schools and for transportation to those private schools. Out of our L E A budget, the largest expenditures, athletic contracted services. Twenty-four thousand, thirteen dollars uh for pool rental, ice rental, and for ski race fees. Private school tuition, ninety-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ten cents. Uh for various private schools, including McLean, Leake School, and Oliverian. Those are the only large items on that warrant. Anybody have questions about those? Okay, I'll move on to the next warrant, which is the same number, uh S two, three, zero, three, zero, two. Uh because we did them on virtually the same date. Uh three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-two cents. Large items out of our revolving account, special ed I D E A grant, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and four cents. Circuit breaker, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and seventeen cents, again for private school tuitions. Uh for the Hathley School um project, the capital account. Sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars uh to both Vertex and Doran Whittier. Our O P M and our designer. Gate fees, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for painting of the Kobe Cutler Center. As well as uh some other work within the Kobe Cutler Center uh in the uh renovation. Forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars out of the flooring project. And that's the capital project um at the high school for replacing the flooring uh for phase one, uh for one phase of that. Out of our L E A, um private school tuition, sixty-two thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Out of custodial contract service and supplies, twelve thousand, eighty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. For uh paper towels, cleaning material and cleaning materials. Uh and those were the only large items on that particular warrant. Again, if there are any questions about anything I've read or anything that I did not speak about, happy to answer those.
You're all side here. Thank you, Dr. Dutch.
Okay, thank you.
See here, we have a correspondent in our. Right front of us here. In good luck. Uh I find in some co-annual report here. Interesting information for sure. Here for us tonight. Um anybody any questions or comments to add? Oh, not for them. Yep, go ahead. I was just gonna.
I didn't know Dr. Dutch was on. I just wanted to say, I know we're not losing him yet, but I just wanted to say publicly. Um just how grateful we all are for all of your work. Um as the newest member of the school committee, Dr. Dutch, I'll just say. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with you and I feel like I've learned so much um from you and you're so patient with all the questions and. It's just been tremendous to have you as a leader um in our schools and um just, just again, just wanted to give you a huge uh thank you. For all the work we've done and all the contributions you've made to, to get us where we are. So thank you, Dr. Dutch.
You're welcome and I I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Um any other business anyone would like to mention? Yes. Tell him to put that at the bottom.
So um. The financial forecast committee met, um which is, I don't know, eleven or thirteen of us um that met. And they brought us with good news that we, um the town and therefore the schools are receiving some additional funding. Um from the state, which is good. And as a result of that, the budget sub or the finance subcommittee met. To discuss how best to allocate those funds and that will be forthcoming. Well, it was all good news and um. Yeah, it was just great. Again, it's great work um and effort by the financial forecast um to do the job they did and it just turned into goodness for us.
Excellent. Great, thank you so much. Um anybody else? Anything worry about, right? See our next meeting is March twenty seventh. And on that note. So moved. Hey, all in favor?